Good evening, everybody. We'll call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. Let's see, we had music tonight sadly, we missed it. But anyway.
I did not.
Catherine Shepard, Claire Nguyen, Abigail Phan, and Edith Phan here. Wave. Thank you. We always appreciate that. We'll open our meeting as we always do with an invocation. This time from Senior Pastor Sandy Bens of Hope Lutheran Church. Good evening. So please stand and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Mayor Pro Tem Chuck Washington.
Good evening. Thank you for the honor. Let us pray. Almighty God, make us who come from many backgrounds, a united people that delights in our many gifts. May we strive for justice and peace in our land. We ask blessings on those who are entrusted with authority, especially our city council, staff, and all elected officials. We give thanks for our nation, our state, and the city of Temecula. Now hear the prayers we offer silently to you. Guide our nation, our state, and our city by your spirit. Give to all people the blessings of well-being and harmony. But above all things, give us faith in you, that we may bring glory to your name and blessings to all people. Amen.
Amen.
If you've watched the news recently, you can't help but notice all around the world that people are fighting against tyranny, fighting for freedoms that we enjoy here in this country. So let's renew our pledge to our nation and the freedoms that we enjoy. Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, and thank you Mr. Washington. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Nigahar.
He's here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Mayor Camachero.
I'm here as well.
Puberty is...
Yeah, no comments. Okay. We do have several presentations and proclamations this evening, so we'll start with those. First is to a group of Eagle Scouts. We always love honoring our Eagle Scouts. So would Connor Hull, Andrew Sarkis, and Matthew Loper, please come on up. And as they're coming up, I'd also like to let you know that there is a fourth, Trevor Holloway, who couldn't be this evening, but couldn't be here, but we honor him as well. So I called three names and I see two of you up here. So let's figure out who's who.
Connor.
And Matthew.
Connor and Matthew. Okay, so that must mean that Andrew's not here. But we'll honor him as well then. The certificates read the same way, and I'll read one. City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement. The City Council of the City of Temecula commends the outstanding achievement of, in this case Trevor Holloway, of Troop 324. We congratulate Trevor for his achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the highest achievement earned in scouting. We are proud of Trevor's accomplishments and wish him continued success in his promising and bright future. In witness whereof, I have here to affix my hand and seal this 24th day of February 2015. We love giving these out. And we also have a special badge that has been minted to commemorate. So for all of you, you don't have enough badges on your stash there, so you need another one. But we're proud to do that. And we have a little tradition as well, that we like to hear from you a little bit and let us know about your Eagle project. So Connor?
Okay. So my Eagle project was at Vinnet Hills Elementary School. What we did was, we went to their garden, which at first was completely run down. Fences were falling, the plant boxes were like, totally, like, completely destroyed. So what we did, we completely took it out, took out all the weeds, set down a gravel pave through the middle of it, repainted all the boxes, mended all the fences, and got rid of all the trash.
That's great. Good job. And yours?
What I basically did was, I built a garden as well for Marietta Head Start in Marietta, and it, which is a preschool up there that services mainly lower-end income families. So, yeah. And I have a picture here, too.
Yeah, if you put it right there, I'll be able to see it. Just give it a minute. We have our crack and check staff there in the back. There it is.
Oh, let me move it up a little. Yeah, so I have some corn that they are growing there. And it's mainly to help young kids to eat healthy as well as learn where food comes from. And so a lot of kids don't know where it comes from, so, yeah.
When they harvest the food, do they actually eat it?
They will eat it.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Well done. Anybody who needs any gardening work around your house? Thank you, gentlemen, and congratulations. Our next presentation is to the Temecula Valley Council PTA, and it's Council PTA Month. Do we have anybody here tonight to accept this award? Please come forward. I'll be down there in a minute, but let me read this.
Thank you.
City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas the Temecula Valley Council of Parent Teacher Associations was chartered 25 years ago, and whereas the Temecula Valley Council PTA provides a foundation for family engagement and volunteerism in 25 active PTA/PTSA units in the Temecula Valley Unified School District, and whereas joining PTA allows you to make a difference in your child's life and to set a good example for giving back to the community, and whereas PTA is the champion of family engagement, promoting volunteerism, and active participation by families in their children's classrooms, thus promoting higher grades, improved test scores, higher self-esteem, and increased attendance. And whereas the Temecula City Council recognizes PTA as the nation's oldest and largest child advocacy association in America, and wishes to honor the Temecula Valley Council PTA for its quarter-century of work on behalf of our district's students and families. Now therefore, I Jeff Camachero, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2015 to be Temecula Valley Council PTA Month. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for being here. And I'll meet you.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the almost 30,000 families we represent in the Temecula Valley Unified School District, we appreciate your support, and we feel like we're in really good company turning 25 this year, along with the City of Temecula and Cal State University San Marcos. So thank you.
Okay. For those of you who are not aware, the circus is coming to town. And Circus Vargas, in this case, they do an awful lot in the communities that they come into, not just providing great entertainment, but really supporting the communities as well. And so we've issued this proclamation, and it says, whereas Circus Vargas, America's favorite traveling big top circus, continues to thrill and enchant children of all ages, and is returning to the city of Temecula with their new and amazing 2015 edition Arloquin -- that's Arloquin without an H, I think they left it out, but anyway. And whereas the world-famous Circus Vargas has taken their family-oriented show on the road for 45 years, performing for rock stars, movie directors, actresses, and importantly, city of Temecula citizens, and will begin its two-week tour in Temecula on March 12, 2015, at the Promenade Temecula, and whereas Circus Vargas will set up its iconic big top tent in the parking lot at the Promenade Mall, and whereas Circus Vargas enjoys giving back to the communities they perform in, and has worked closely with the city of Temecula to honor the heroes of the special needs community, and therefore, opening night at Circus Vargas in Temecula on Thursday, March 12, at 7:30 PM, will be Circus Vargas and the City of Temecula's Second Annual Autism Task Force Night at the circus, dedicated to the special needs community and all of its heroes, including the Southwest Riverside County Autism Task Force. And whereas Circus Vargas invites all youth, including youth with special needs and their families, to enjoy a matinee show where new memories can be treasured for generations to come, and whereas Circus Vargas, steeped in tradition and devoted to all things magnificent and happy, will present an array of unparalleled artists and performers dedicated to captivate and astound all Temecula citizens, and whereas the city of Temecula encourages all to enjoy a memorable and magical experience for the entire family at Circus Vargas in Temecula. Now therefore, I Jeff Camachero, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim March 12, 2015, through March 23, 2015, to be Circus Vargas Days. Nobody is here yet from the circus, but it discusses here the heroes of the special needs community, and we have one of those heroes sitting right up here with us who will accept this award on their behalf. Councilmember Mike Nigahar.
Thank you. And I know they're gonna find this very special. I want to give you a little bit of a really interesting backstory that's a little bit fun. I remember growing up in Inglewood, California. Ringling Brothers Barnum and Bailey Circus would come to town, and I lived in an area that was maybe a half a mile away from the Forum, so that's where they would come. And I remember, I was 15 years old, and I heard that Circus was hiring temporary workers. So I went in there, I lined up, and lo and behold, I got hired by the Circus to go work at the Forum. It was totally cool, and I did such a good job that they asked me to just kind of travel with them, you know, next to Anaheim. Then after that, I think it was Oakland and Fresno, and kind of on and on, and I got homesick at 15 and came home. But I got to live on the train. The guy who hired me was a guy named Roland Kaiser. So fast forward about, geez, 30 years later, it turns out that Mr. Kaiser owned Circus Vargas, and I get a chance to visit with him, and I said, "Do you remember me? You hired me when I was 15 years old." Okay? It just so happens his daughter Rolanda has a 12-year-old son on the autism spectrum as well. And so they said, "This is more than coincidence. We gotta do something special for your community." So by coming into our community, they said, "You know what? We gotta celebrate the heroes in the autism community and in the special needs community. We're gonna donate 300 tickets. Give 'em to whoever you think deserves it." That's about $6,000 worth of tickets. And so just for my council colleagues and for the public, I believe 150 tickets went to our Nicholas Foundation, 75 tickets went to Skip, which are Supporting Kids, Involving Parents Program, put on by the city, and another 75 went to the Temecula High Hopes Program. And if you attended or had a chance to attend last year's opening night, let me tell you, a lot of these families, to take a family of four to go to the circus, that's over a $100 night. You add to it popcorn, or food, or what have you. They were able to go out, have fun, feel special, have a night out. You should have seen the smiles on some of these kids' faces that were just ear-to-ear and lasted all night. It was amazing. So if you can come out on March the 12 opening night, or catch any of the other shows, please do. It's a fantastic show. And I'll bring this up again in a couple of weeks on our March the 10 meeting, because it'll be two days before they open. But good organization, good family show, and definitely an organization that wants to be part of the community. So give 'em your patronage. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nigahar, and I'm sure that all of the young people in the community, on the autism scale or not, appreciate what you're doing for them, you and them. So that's a job well done. The final proclamation we have tonight is in support of a program that we started here in the city on Valentine's Day, February 14. And let me read the proclamation, and then we'll have a little fun with it. City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas Temecula has heart because nice matters, is a 2015 citywide initiative that promotes awareness about an important message of human kindness, which is deeply rooted in the hearts of Temecula. And whereas promoting Temecula has heart because nice matters, fosters the concept of putting others ahead of oneself, paying it forward, and similar goodwill that demonstrates Temecula is a city with a heart. And whereas kindness is prevalent among the citizens and business communities of Temecula, and the city recognizes and appreciates all efforts to demonstrate kindness to one another, and whereas Temecula has heart because nice matters, is purposefully named to be in strong support of the Temecula Valley Unified School District's Because Nice Matters campaign, which has spurred a district-wide message of kindness over the past four years, and this collaboration between the city and school district sends a powerful message that there is nothing we can't accomplish together in terms of the notion that nice does matter, not only among the students in our community, but among the citizenry at large. And whereas the city of Temecula is encouraging and celebrating random acts of kindness citywide by collaborating with the school district and the business community to challenge all Temecula residents and businesses to conduct random acts of kindness in Temecula throughout 2015. Now therefore, I Jeff Camachero, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the year of 2015 to be Temecula Has Heart Because Nice Matters Year. This is a fun program. We have nobody to give the two, so I'll give it to the city clerk when we're done. But kind of a proclamation to ourselves. Is that awful? Actually, it's to you, the citizens. And what we're doing is embarking on a program where we know in this city, we've got quite a city, and these kinds of acts of kindness go on all the time, every day, everywhere. But we can do more, and we can encourage more as a city. So what we're asking of all of our residents, when you do something nice, and if you don't, then go out of your way to do something nice for somebody, post it on your Facebook page, assuming you have one, and include the hashtag #TemeculaHasHeart, and it'll be uploaded to a Twitter page that has all these acts of kindness. And we also ask that you challenge three of your friends, family, or whoever to also do the same. And finally, after you've performed this act of kindness, tie a red or a purple ribbon on the fence along the duck pond on Inez and Rancho California Road. If you've been out there in the last couple of days, you'll see the corner is now full of red ribbons. So it's kind of fun, but it really has a purpose. And the purpose is to brighten the day of people who may not feel that good. You know, there's the old saying, "We don't know what people are dealing with, whether they're our friends or our family." Everybody's dealing with something. And we often encounter somebody, close to us or not, and you can tell there's something bothering them. It doesn't take much. This is not a financial program. It's not gonna cure world hunger, and it's not gonna result in world peace. But it will brighten the days of people, and that's what we want to encourage. So it can be a pat on the back and a smile, and, boy, you're doing a great job. Or if you've lived in your neighborhood, in your house, for 10 years, and you don't know your neighbor, go and knock on their door and say, "Hi, I'm Joe, and I just came to say hi," and see the smile that that elicits. Or maybe your neighbor has been suffering medically and can't mow their lawn. Go mow their lawn for them, especially young people. Get a little energetic. It's great. So it not only helps the people who are the recipients of the good deed, but you'll find that it puts something special in your own heart as well. So with that, we've got a few things that we're going to show on the screen behind me, just a few things that have already transpired, and kind of give you the idea and a little inspiration of what we're talking about. So for one, this is an absolutely beautiful picture taken by Matthew, I think his name is Barley, who consented to contribute this picture to the effort and give it to the city of Temecula. So we appreciate that, Matthew. And these were actually Facebook posts. And here's somebody who says, "I just wanted to say thank you so much to the extremely kind and generous man at Stater Brothers right now, who paid for my groceries. I left my wallet at home instead of having to go all the way back to my home in the rain with my four-month-old. This amazing man paid for my groceries. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, feeling so blessed." Now, that's quite a thing to do. You don't have to do something that's that expensive or dramatic, but that's awfully nice. Here's another one. Somebody posted a free box of fresh fruits and vegetables on Temecula Talk, which is a website, yesterday, for anyone who could use it. "I messaged a few friends who thought I might really appreciate, who I thought would really appreciate it, and sure enough, one of my friends was so grateful to go pick it up. It even had a couple of jars of peanut butter and frozen broccoli cheddar soup. My friend whipped up a healthy smoothie when he got home. It warmed my heart to witness that he felt great to help facilitate, that I helped facilitate, something so small and simple yet so worthy. Thank you." And of course, notice the hashtag #TemeculaHasHeart. One more. This is from Matthew Wycheck, who probably won't want me saying he's one of our own city employees, and a very good one at that. And he said, "I just bought three families dinner secretly."
That's fun.
Maybe it's not so secretly if he posted it on Facebook. But the idea is to let people know what you're doing, because kindness is contagious. And the more people see that you're doing it, or others are doing it, the more they get inspired to do their own thing. So that's what it's all about. It's going to run throughout the year, and we'll roll out various programs throughout the year where we'll talk about challenging the schools, and we'll challenge businesses, and we'll challenge ourselves, and see if we can't keep it going throughout the year. So there's a little picture of the red ribbons at the corner of the duck pond, and by the end of the year, we expect that entire fence to be red and purple with ribbon. So it'll be fun.
Do you have to take your own ribbon?
You have to take your own ribbon, yes. We contemplated having a receptacle with a bunch of ribbons, but we thought they wouldn't last more than an hour, because not everybody has heart.
Yes. So take your own red ribbons. That's why I asked.
But if you need a ribbon, send me an email. I'll make sure we get you one.
You know, Mr. Mayor, as the year goes by and we hit the Christmas season, it's gonna be beautiful at the duck pond. And what a way to celebrate Christmas, to see from fence line to fence line, that whole fence covered with ribbons.
Mm-hmm. I agree. And it's a symbol of what we will have accomplished. As we say to the state, the country, and the world, Temecula has heart, and it's a great place to live. As we get into some of the bigger organizations that we'll be talking to about doing something, we can do things where a business adopts a family for Thanksgiving or Christmas, or brings a military man or woman into your home for a Thanksgiving dinner when their loved ones are far from here. So there are a million things you could do, big and small. Again, they don't have to be big. They just need to be important to the person that you do them with. So we'll move forward. Thank you for your indulgence. The next section of the agenda is Public Comments. A total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing public comments on the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item, and each of those speakers will be limited to five minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers under public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have one. Gail Hoxter.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. On behalf of Susan Harrington, the Director of the Public Health Department for the County of Riverside, and also Dr. Cameron Kaiser, the Public Health Officer, we want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, and also to share with you that we will be doing a series of public forums throughout the County of Riverside, and we will be having one here in the city of Temecula. And with this, it'll be at the library on Pabba Road on March 5, from 6 to 7. And the purpose for this meeting, or these meetings, community forums, are to invite residents to come and share their desires and how we can help the city of Temecula and the Department of Public Health regarding how they can have better access to healthcare, education, and community, and how we can be better partners. And with that, we're asking you as leaders and also employees to help us get the word out and encourage residents to come and share with us, because sometimes we don't always do the best at listening, and so now we're asking residents to tell us what is it that they really want. And what we're looking at is what matters from education to economy, environment, safety, health services, mental health, and eating and exercising. And so with this, we are putting all these surveys together, and it'll be known by zip code or by city that we go throughout the whole county, and put this together into a report for next summer. And it'll be published and available on the website. And we also are giving people the opportunity, if they can't make it to the library on March 5, that they're able to do it online, and so they can visit. We have a, each one of you have a flyer, and we have a, it's called SHAPE Riverside County Strategic Health Alliance Pursuing Equity. And they can take it online at www.rivcocha.org, and take the survey and be a part of the event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hoxter. Is there a specific time, or, oh, I see on the flyer, 6 to 7 in the evening? You know, Madam Clerk, or Michael, this is something that the results of which obviously will benefit us in our own forward planning, and so we know whatever holes there may be in anything that we can provide, although public health is not generally a function of city government, but certainly we want to make sure that our residents get the best service they can. So why don't we go ahead and put a link on our website for this event, and make sure that we get the word out any other way we can that makes good sense. So we appreciate you being here, and thanks for doing it.
And thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, no other speakers? Okay, then we come to City Council Reports. Reports by members of the City Council on matters not on the agenda will be made at this time, and a total not to exceed 10 minutes will be devoted to these reports. And we have Mr. Washington in the queue.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate and thank our Chamber of Commerce for putting on their 49th Awards Gala last Saturday, and I wanted to congratulate all of the winners. There were a number of different categories, all of them very special. And it's a lot of fun to be there and witness folks being recognized for their contributions to our community throughout the year.
Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Ron?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report really briefly on the first RCHCA meeting that we had last week in Riverside County. And just want to let you know that the vice chair is now Mr. Ramos from the City of Marietta. And one of the things that we talked about at the meeting was, you know, we've had this plan for Riverside County related to the Stevens kangaroo rat for quite some time. And I think we're at a point now where we can actually start talking about potential delisting of the species, because a lot of the success criteria that the plan was supposed to meet have been accomplished, and a lot of property has been acquired and so forth. And so at the meeting, I requested the opportunity to identify perhaps a subcommittee of the RCHCA or a task force that can work with the agencies to see if we can try and move an initiative like that forward. And I volunteered my time for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that mean that if the program is essentially fulfilled, that the fee will go away, or will they keep that in place for maintenance of the program?
Typically, you know, it kind of depends on how the program's written, but typically there are options available to either keep a fee in place, to reduce that fee, or to develop just an operations and maintenance program.
Great. Thank you. And Mrs. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some may be aware that a group of residents from Riverside County, mostly educators, people from Riverside County Office of Education, school district superintendents, and I happen to have been invited to participate in December in the President Summit, the White House Summit on Education, and it was a real honor. And Riverside County was selected because we had taken on a task of getting 100% participation from high school students to sign up for FAFSA, the Financial Aid. So I have some slides that I'd like to show you just really quick, because there are some misconceptions about what FAFSA is. So this is FAFSA True or False. Are you ready? You can push your buttons. Okay. So FAFSA only provides financial aid for students with reduced incomes who can't afford to pay for college.
False.
True or false? True or false? You say false. A lot of, okay, go on the next slide, then. That's false. FAFSA forms are used by thousands of granting organizations that want to give away money to all... to all kinds of students, regardless of family income. So, if you have a FAFSA form on file, you may be selected for a scholarship that you weren't even aware of, and that actually happened to our daughter. I happen to have a large packet here of different scholarships that are put out and compiled by Congresswoman Lucille Royball Allard, and she does this every year. And there are scholarships in here for all kinds of things. Friends of the California State Fair Scholarship. How many of you been to the State Fair? But if you don't have a FAFSA form on file, these people can't find you. We've got Warner Brothers Animation Scholarships. So, if you like to draw, if you like art, and I could go on and on. So, each year, foundations and granting organizations leave billions of dollars on the table, because students don't apply. So, these people must give this money away. These foundations are established to give money away, but if they can't find a student that fits their criteria, that money just sits on the table. So, if you thought FAFSA applications were just for securing government financial aid, you may be missing out on a grant that was meant just for you, the left-handed mathematician who wants to teach algebra to students in the Ozarks. And believe me, there are some scholarships that are that exacting. So, go on to the next one. And I gave FAFSA a new acronym, just because most people think of financial aid, and they think it's for students who have reduced incomes, who can't afford college, and that is absolutely false. So, I renamed it Financial Award Flag, because it's pointing right at you, and your talents, and your family name, and your career goals, because they're looking at all of those things to award these grants and scholarships and internships. So, apply. So, Financial Aid, Financial Award Flag, so apply. There's no reason not to apply. If you get a scholarship, it's fabulous. And I saw some in here for $100,000. So, and you can get, go online, and it's at fafsa.edu.gov. And we're trying to get 100% of high school students in Riverside County to apply for this, for these scholarships, because everyone that wants to go to college can go to college. You can find a way. So, and then I have one more thing. We received a special recognition in the mail today, or at least I did, and it's, it's for the, the whole council, but I, today I got a special autographed picture from Gary Sinis, who's a friend of ours, and a friend of the council. And this one says, "To the City of Temecula, thank you for supporting our military. God bless America." He had tasked the City of Temecula, or asked us why we're so pro-military, and about all the things that we do for our military, because he wanted every city in the nation to, to duplicate Temecula's efforts. So, I had sent him-
Is there a special phrase that he used?
Yes, he said, "Temeculize." He would like to temeculize the rest of the country, so that every city and community honors their military personnel, and, and retired military, and their veterans the same way Temecula does. So, I dropped this in the mail to him. This is our smaller booklet that we have on everything that the city does for our military. And to thank us, he sent me this wonderful autographed picture. So, he's a really good guy, and we like everything, and appreciate what Gary does for our military, finding homes for troops who have lost limbs. So, thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Mrs. Edwards. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item two, approve the action minutes of February 10th, 2015. Three, approve the list of demands. Four, approve fiscal year 2014-15 mid-year budget adjustments. Five, adopt resolution approving revisions to the established citywide record retention schedule. Six, designate the inspirational language for Special Needs Playground at Margarita Community Park, at the request of the Inclusive Play Structure Ad Hoc Subcommittee members, Camachero and Nigard. Item seven, accept the improvements and notice of completion for Raw Power Ranch Street Improvements Phase Two, PW09-02. Item eight, accept the improvements and notice of completion for the Community Recreation Center Ornamental Picket Fence Replacement, Public Works Project 12-21. Item nine, accept the improvements and notice of completion for the Community Recreation Center Mechanical Reservation, PW13, that was renovation, PW13-06. Ten, approve the agreement for minor maintenance services with VN Enterprises, Inc., for engineering, wood playground fiber, and general mulch. Eleven, approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with Moffett and Nichols Engineers for French Valley Parkway Interchange Phase One, PW07-04. Item twelve, grant two non-exclusive easements to Rancho California Water District in connection with the installation of a pump-to-waste pipeline extension at the district's well site number 216, at Ronald Reagan Sports Park. And item thirteen, accept the substitute agreements and bonds for the public improvements in track number 29661-2, located southerly of the intersection of Murrieta Hot Springs Road and Pierroy Road. Council? Consent?
Mr. Mayor, pull item six for comment.
We will do that. We have a motion. Did we have a second on the balance?
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and vote on the balance, and then we'll pull item six, and we'll deal with that separately, so.
And I'll amend my motion to the balance.
Thank you. So, that excludes item six. Is that your second?
Yes.
Okay, please cast your votes. And that motion does carry unanimously, and we will pull item six. Mr. Nigard, did you want to make a statement?
Yeah, I did. If staff could go ahead and put the picture up on the overhead, um, not that picture. There you go. And not that picture either. Is that what I look like?
Yeah, nobody wants to see that.
That's your head.
I rarely get to see the back of my head, folks, so that's very-
I hate to be the one to tell you, Mike, but-
Yeah, please don't, okay?
Dark side of the moon.
You couldn't resist. Do I need to go back to Nice Matters? Okay, how's this works?
Mr. Nigard, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. All right. Tomorrow is a very special day for the city, city council, and the city citizens. We're going to cut the ribbon on what we call our Special Needs Park, which is located at Margarita Community Park. That's right by Temecula Elementary School, Margarita and, and Moraga, right in that area. The ribbon cutting will, will be at 3:30. The, the Special Needs Park, among other things, consents of a, of a fence to keep children safe, and enable parents to relax while their kids are playing. Swings that can accommodate those with, with special needs and disabilities. Structures that are of a certain height, so that they don't pose a danger to kids who don't know their place in space. Tactile things to stimulate colors, to stimulate, as well as a, a city's first splash pad and water feature, which you see there. We held a contest, and, and we wanted help in naming the park, but we really couldn't, you know, a lot of people gave some good, good, just good names for the park. But as the subcommittee thought about it, and a, a certain theme kept arising, was we really didn't, not only we, but a lot of people in the community, didn't really want to celebrate disabilities. We wanted to celebrate abilities. We wanted to celebrate inclusion, not exclusion. And so, as we thought about it, instead of naming the park exclusively, sure, it's a Special Needs Park, but you're going to see, and, and these are just renderings, we'll come up with something more permanent, but there'll be an archway over the entrance. The archway will say something to the effect of, "Welcome to all children of Temecula," or "Dedicated to all children of Temecula. Come play, and come soar." And the idea behind the soar and the eagle, and again, we're going to put this more together, is when you see the eagle, you'll also see the moniker, "We expect great things from you." And that is because we don't want to celebrate disabilities. In fact, most people who are special needs are extremely abled, and extremely capable, except, most of the time, perhaps, we're not recognizing it. And I ran into Temple Grandin in Sacramento a few weeks back, and if you don't know who Temple Grandin is, Google it. She's a very prominent person who is now in her 60s, who wrote many books. She's, has a doctorate, and she happens to also be autistic. And she goes on to say things like, you know what, half of Silicon Valley is full of people with autism spectrum. A, a good portion of Hollywood, and all the quirkiness that comes out of there, is people who came from places with disabilities. It's amazing how much that permeates our society. So, that's how we came to the conclusion. Mr. Camachero, have I pretty much covered?
I think so.
One last thing, is as this evolves, much like we have a walkway or a path of honor at our, at our Veterans Memorial, people who wish to buy a brick and inscribe something on the brick, much like it is outside Disneyland, or our Path of Honor, we'll be instituting that program. We're hoping our Nicholas, or, or the city will, will, will monitor that program, and that way, people can buy bricks, dedicate them to their kids, their family, those that have helped them, helped their kids achieve. And we expect great things from all kids in the City of Temecula, and I'm really proud of what our city has done. And with that, I'm going to move the item.
Thank you. We have a motion. A second before we vote, I'd, I'd just like to say that although we're sure that this park will be inspirational to all those who use it, it was inspirational to us as well to work on it, and to see it come to fruition, it really is something very special. So, come on out, help us celebrate, and if you can't do that, come visit anytime. It's a, it's a park for all, but it certainly has some specialized equipment that is just wonderful for, for people with special needs, and so it's a great addition to our park system.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one other thing? Something that has occurred in our, in our community, and it really comes under, under the banner of Nice Matters, is that those with special needs have really been embraced by the community, and, and you know, the, the sector of the community that has embraced them the most are you young people out in the, in the audience, at the high schools. In such an amazing way to wear barriers, you folks, you young people, are tearing down barriers, and, and bringing people who, who thought they couldn't have friends are now having friends, and people who thought they had nothing to offer really think they have something to offer. And so, you know what, it's changing the whole community, and I just wanted to commend you, and keep up the good work, because Nice Matters, and we really, really are changing lives in this community. And I thought, I, I wanted to mention that, and thank you, folks out there.
Thank you. That's well said. And with that, we can cast our votes. And that does pass unanimously, so thank you to all. We'll now recess the Temecula City Council meeting, and move to the Temecula Community Services District meeting, and President Chuck Washington.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A call to order, the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Madam City Clerk, please let the record reflect that all of the directors are present. Do we have any requests to speak under public comment?
We do not.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar and a notice to the public. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. We have two items tonight. Item 14 is approval of the minutes from February 10th. And item 15, approve fiscal year 2014-15 mid-year budget adjustments.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nigard, and a second by the mayor. Please register your votes. The tally shows that that passes unanimously. A hawk.
Yes, Mr. President. We do have a report today.
Yay.
This fall will mark the 10th anniversary of the Old Town Temecula Community Theater. I think we have a slide. And in preparation for a very exciting and special season, not yet, the theater will be undergoing major renovations. Beginning March 1st, Temecula's theater will go dark. Thank you. And will reopen in September. But as always, the show must go on. So, rest assured, we will continue to present quality shows during this timeframe, in several city facilities and other venues. Tickets for the Merc and the theater performances are available online at temeculatheater.org, at the door of each performance, or effective March 4th, at the relocated ticket office at our very own Temecula Valley Museum, located at 28314 Mercedes Street. And 10 days and counting. The City of Temecula proudly presents the 2015 Temecula Ride Run. With the tremendous support of the city council, Community Services Commission, and the Old Town Association, once again, we welcome the region's top car enthusiasts to the Southwest Valley's original ride run event. From our signature ride run logo, quality merchandise and vendors, to the famous Friday Night Cruise on March 6th, and the March 7th Saturday Show and Shine Events, you asked for bigger and better, and I think you agree that 2015 Temecula Ride Run delivers. So, whether this will be your first visit, or you're an annual ride run participant, you are guaranteed to experience the best ride run yet, the Temecula way. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. And back to your previous slide, it's going to be a little bit of an imposition on folks in the community, that the theater will be closed for some time. We may have discussed this previously, but during the construction of the theater, and subsequent to that, some construction defects were discovered. A settlement out of court was arrived at, so that those that were responsible for the mistakes, not the taxpayers, will be footing the bill for renovating the theater and fixing those construction defects. And I think a hearty thanks goes out to all of those folks that have got our back, while the theater will be closed. And it's nothing short of miraculous that your team has been able to pull together venues so that the show can go on.
If I can include, not just our team, that team extensive Public Works and facilities who supported this effort.
Outstanding. Excellent. Thank you. General Manager's report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Directors?
Yep.
Move adjournment. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. We'll move on now to a meeting of an agency that we call the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. And Madam Clerk, please show that all of the directors are present this evening. Do we have any public comment under this portion? Okay, then we'll dispense with the reading of the rules. We do have a couple of items under the consent calendar. Again, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. We have item 16, approve the action minutes of the meeting of January 13th, 2015, which was the last time this body met. And item 17, approve recognized obligation payment schedule for the period July 1, 2015 through December 31, 2015. And that is a requirement of the state process of winding down redevelopment, that we do that.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And the consent calendar is approved, 5:0. With that, we will adjourn that portion of tonight's festivities, and move on to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We have no further items on the agenda, so we'll go right to the city manager's report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Why not? You in a hurry?
I can make something up, if you want me to.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from the body?
Before we close, I'm, I'm dying to know, and I'm sure all of you are as well, including those watching at home, if Mr. Nigard would share what he actually did while in the circus.
Oh. Yes, I'd like to know that.
I think he was a trapeze artist, and that's, that's what I heard.
I sold souvenirs. I sold flashlights, and snow cones, and blow-up animals, and I ran up and down stadium stairs, and it was awesome. And when, and when the time came to move on, I helped break down the tent and load it on the train. And, and listen, I'm glad you brought this up, because my mom thinks I was spending the summer at my brother's house. Mom, I'm sorry. I know she's watching at home, okay? I spilled the beans-
And do you think that experience qualified him for something in his adult life?
It must have. All the experiences matter.
You didn't happen to work with elephants, did you? Just curious if you worked with elephants.
No, they were there. They were there, yeah. Sometimes you'd have to roll the bear. You did whatever they told you to do. In, in fact, even the stars, it's funny, you see all the glitz and glamour, but even the stars behind the scenes worked. It was really kind of an interesting object lesson, so.
Well, I think we've taken this as far as we can, since it's not on the agenda, but-
Thank you.
With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of Tuesday, March 10th.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You had something to say about adjournment?
I do.
Please go ahead.
I do, thank you. If we could, I would like to adjourn the meeting in the name of someone who is a friend of the City of Temecula, and you all know Jim Mickelson, who is the husband of Dr. Karen Haynes from Cal State San Marcos. His father just passed away at the age of 95, and he was an incredible man and was so proud of everything that Temecula had done through our partnership with Cal State San Marcos. So I would like to adjourn the meeting in the name of Mr. Wayne Mickelson.
Thank you. So ordered. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting unless there's any objection. Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maryam.